The Zoning Board Appeals meeting. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Art, just to the roll call, Art?
Yes.
Larry? You hear Larry?
Yes.
Tony G? Tony, yes?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Did I miss anybody? Christine is absent, and so we have a quorum. We can proceed. For anyone new unfamiliar with the proceedings before the board, there's an agenda up here. Each item will be taken in the order that's on the agenda. The applicant will come forward, be sworn in. All testimony before the board is under oath. They'll describe their application. The board members may have some questions. The public is able to make comments, either anyone in person or on Zoom, or you can also call in. So if already, we'll take item number one. This is the Arthur S. May Redevelopment Holdings, 25 Raymond Avenue. You were sworn, you're still under oath? So you were here last month?
Yes.
Okay, and you have some new renderings?
I do. After our discussion at last month's meeting, the board made a couple of recommendations, things they'd like to see. We know the county was not happy with having directories on both ends of the property. So the first one that I'm showing you, that I gave you this evening, was the original application for the one on the south side, we'll call it, not on the corner of the arterial, which was a little over 90 square feet. You felt that perhaps it could be a little bit smaller. So we, the next one, should be the smaller one, which we have reduced the base from 18 feet to 13 feet in width. With the overall sign panels will, it's at 53 square feet for the signage. That's the Arlington. And the panels for each of the tenants. And so that made those 15 inches tall by three foot wide instead of the 20 inch high by four foot panels. So if you compare the two, we brought that down over a little over a third in size.
I'm sorry, what's the total square feet of that?
Of the smaller one?
Yes.
The smaller one, we're rated about 53.8 square feet. If you would just go grab the very last one in that stack. I have a photo here of another directory. This one here is 64 square feet. It's at 11 Raymond Avenue. So I just put that in there as kind of a comparison. So to compromise with the board, we did bring that one down in size. And then on the north side, we talked about doing a destination sign rather than a directory sign on that corner. So we have proposed one here. The actual location of where we're showing that, oh, and on the other pictures, we got rid of all the fencing and stuff. Just tried to put green behind there to give you a better idea. The one on the north corner, I put it there so it is at least in the photo. However, it probably will be moved more in the grassy area in front of where you see the larger metal box there. We're waiting, we've looked at the site plan with all the utilities, what's already there, what's currently there. There's a lot going on on the corner, so it's a little difficult to get it. But it will be on that corner, set back a few feet from the sidewalk and probably just to the left of the light pole, the crosswalk pole.
And what's the size of that one?
That one? I believe the sign itself, let me get mine. The black section of the sign, the actual sign itself is 20 inches wide and eight foot, eight inches tall. So we're under the 12 feet.
I'm not so sure.
And then if you want to get an overall width of it, the beige is two foot wide and the column is three foot. So it's still going to be a monument base, quite wide, but we brought the square footage down and got rid of all of the tenant panels, which is something the board requested to see. And actually, the owners are quite happy with that. They kind of like it better as well. In deciding on that, and that one originally, I believe, was 52 square feet? I think that one was originally about 52 square feet. You have that in your original one. It was the tall one. This one here that was an actual directory. So we're taking that one off the table, the one that you originally had, the big directory on the arterial and Raymond Avenue corner. The board had also asked if we knew what we were doing with the building signs. I don't know if you've seen, the railings are now up and the awnings will be going up. And I had shown you the one that you have here that has chop it up on the front. If you go to the second page of that, are the two options that we'll be using. They will all be flat wall signs. The ones that you see there that are black, they will not be internally illuminated. They will have a light bar across the top with dimensional letters. And if you look to the right, the very end of the building, those are individual channel letters. So all will be in the same spot. All will be 15 square feet. No variance is being sought. And they have either of those options.
On the illustration with the black chop it up sign, three pages from the end? No, the one, this one with the black.
The front one. That was when we were considering, if you look at the very end of the building, the protruding one.
My question is going to be, where is the monument sign? Where would the monument sign be in this illustration?
The directory one?
The directory one, yeah.
The directory ones will be at the only entrance.
Okay, and that's?
That would be here, at this end.
Okay, all right.
That's the only entrance that goes into parking. There's no entrance on the corner.
So my question is going to be, what's the benefit for having all the vendor or clients on that sign when the storefront all has signs?
We kind of discussed that. I don't believe you were here last time.
It was not here last time.
When you're coming down through Raymond Avenue, that's where you have the, 15 square feet is very small for a sign. They're going to be across the storefront. When you're coming down Raymond Avenue from the main street side, nobody's going to be looking up at that building because that's where you have the merge. It's always a race of who's going to get in. And by the time you get that merge and you hit there, that's when you would see the directory sign off on the south side.
And where is that in relationship to the entrance?
It is to the right of the entrance.
So how much to the right of the entrance?
I believe we're about 10 foot off the entrance, roughly eight to 10 feet if you're talking from the actual driveway.
Do you still have the, your application from last month? That had the, this one? You still have it?
Yes.
So, let's see.
That's on Lot 4, marked in the red there.
So. So where's the entrance?
The entrance is.
This is Raymond, this is the entrance.
Right, the shaded area.
Okay, so then, on this diagram, it looks like the sign is past the entrance.
Yep.
Yes, as you're heading down, yes.
Right.
You're going to see the driveway prior to, yes.
Okay, so what's the benefit? You're not going to see the sign until you've passed the entrance.
No, you will see it well before the entrance. When you drive and you look at any signs that you look at, you're not like right there looking at it. You're looking ahead. It's off to the right, like any other directory. The one I showed you here on Raymond Avenue is the same thing. It's past the entrance. About the same amount of feet.
And that one's 60 something square feet, right?
That's 64 square feet. An approach to the entrance is when you see the sign and turn in. Gives you the opportunity to turn in.
Can you make the left turn on Raymond going northbound?
I am not sure. I really have no idea. I don't know if this, if our legend shows that on the site plan or not. You have a larger one.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm, memory serves, I think you can make that left.
And based upon the calculations that you gave on the other pylon sign, the one on the arterial?
The one on the corner of the arterial, yes.
You say it was eight feet by 20 inches?
Yes, the black section of the sign itself.
That's more than 12 square feet.
I think it's 12 feet in height.
I think we're talking about the height.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said 12 square feet.
It's less than 12 foot in height.
Okay, all right.
Which we had discussed last time. Did it need to be that tall?
How big can that sign be?
Probably 12 feet is the height, right?
Yep.
So it looks like that's still?
Slightly over.
Right.
Free standing sign not to exceed 12 square feet and a maximum height of 12 feet. Above finished grade.
So the height would be okay, but you still need a variance on the size. All right, those are the questions I have. Art?
I think we need about two square feet.
1.33, but.
You have a question on this presentation?
Yes.
The chop chop, that sign that's hanging off the building, that's gone, right?
Yes, that's.
That's probably up.
Yeah, we had shown that one. It doesn't work well with the distance between the storefronts as you're coming down the street.
Now, coming out of your parking lot onto Raymond, can you crawl over and turn northbound on Raymond?
I don't, I honestly do not know. I don't know. Do you have the larger of, I don't know if it would say on, it doesn't say on the site plan?
Doesn't say on the site plan that we have, no. It doesn't cover that. And I just, it's been a couple of years since we looked at it that carefully, so I just don't, I don't want to say one word.
I mean, there is, there is no.
Sure we looked at it? Because there was a, there's a whole traffic thing that went on for the whole thing. So I'm sure it was looked at, but I just can't tell you, as I sit here, exactly what the answer is.
You can take, you can take a left. Whether it's going to be allowed, I don't know. There is no center aisle in there.
No, I know that.
Because you have the street across the street. I think it's Davis, is it? Is that Davis? I think that's Davis, yeah, before LeBrange.
My other question is, this drawing, what is it? Seven point something? Where you have the Arlington on the very top of the one building?
On top of the building.
Do you need the Arlington up there? You got it twice on the other sides?
Do we need the, I'm sorry, the?
Do you need the Arlington up there?
Arlington letters? That's going to be kind of like a stamp. You're not even really going to see them. It's like kind of.
Then why have it?
Stamping the building. It's something that most buildings do. I mean, that's it. I don't think we're really, I mean.
Because that appears to be a sign now. It's got lights on it.
We're not applying for any wall signs or anything at this time. I know you had asked to see what we were going to do there. It's just kind of the center focal. That's how it's built up there to just put raised letters. They're not lit or anything.
But it's showing lights on it. If you look at that drawing, it looks like it's a raised panel with lights on it.
No, there's no lights on it. That's kind of their original branding one that they had there.
But there are lights.
They might have the goose necks on it. They're not internally illuminated, channel letters like Juliet or anything.
It's still white. Goose neck, whatever, it's still white.
Oh, okay, here. Yeah, they're not, actually, that's already been changed. It will not have a backer like that, like a panel. It will just be individual metal letters saying the Arlington on it.
Again, why do we need it if you have?
They want it. It's, you know, a stamp on a building. It's the name of it.
No more questions. Phyllis?
You kind of hinted, so you're going to come back and get signage for each of the office, each of the stores?
Not to you. We will not need to come to you. We will just simply apply for permits that will be within the code. The board had just asked to kind of have an idea what it might be. And we said that we wanted to keep them relatively uniform. They will all be of the same size and same type of sign.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No further.
Tony, yes?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom? On Zoom that wishes to comment? All right, I don't see anyone.
See anyone? Hold on, there's one thing in the chat. Let me just check and see what that says. Okay, that was before we turned on the sound. Okay.
All right. Seeing no one move to close the public hearing?
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
The motion's carried. And so just to reiterate, at the end of the applications, we'll do, after the record's closed, we'll have a deliberation at the end of the meeting. You can either wait till the end of the meeting to find out what our determination is or you can contact the zoning administrator in the morning. So that brings us to item number two. I'm sorry, item number two has been withdrawn, so item number three, Peter Longi. This is 102 Stratford Drive?
Yes.
Would you have a seat? State your name.
Name is Peter Longi, 102 Stratford Drive.
Mr. Longi, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
Yes, it is.
Okay, why don't you describe your application to us?
The application for an accessory apartment in my single-family home. Look at it, 102 Stratford Drive.
Okay, and this, how long have you had the accessory?
Oh, 10 years.
And do you know how big it is?
435 square feet.
And do you know the size of the whole house?
The whole house? I don't have that number with me. It's over 2,000 square feet, no.
2,339. Of 1165 below? I'm not sure. First, is that first and second?
The one is the basement.
Oh, basement.
The below grade, yeah.
All right, is the basement livable?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
Private entrance.
Okay. And let's see. You're on town water or sewer?
Town water.
Okay.
And we have a sewer system. The Stratford Development has their own sewer system.
Is there a separate entrance to the?
Yes, it is. And I might add, that entrance was part of the original construction of the building, of the house.
What about parking?
Parking, plenty of parking. There's six spots in the driveway.
And do you reside there?
Yes, I do.
Okay, all right, those are the questions I have. Art?
No, good, thank you. No questions.
Phyllis?
Is there somebody living in the apartment now?
Yes, my sister-in-law was there.
Thank you.
Larry?
What's the reason you're applying for the permit now?
Well, time to legalize it. I figured someday I'm going to be selling the house and instead of going through these issues, if there was going to be a closing, better to straighten it out ahead of time, get it all legalized now.
It's a novel approach. Tony G?
I have no questions.
Tony, yes?
No questions.
All right, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? I don't see anyone in the audience. Anyone on Zoom?
Not seeing anyone try to unmute or otherwise indicate they want to speak.
All right, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. And again, you can either wait till the end of the meeting or find out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay, that brings us to item number four, 11 Lincoln Drive. Just state your name.
Violeta Gashi.
Okay, and speaking to the microphone, if you would?
Violeta Gashi, on behalf of Lizam Gashi.
Ms. Gashi, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the best, is true, is true to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay, why don't you describe this application?
An accessory apartment located at 11 Lincoln Drive in the Gibson. I am applying for a permit.
All right, and it's, you're legalizing it?
I am, but we have had some issues. Upon purchasing the home back in 2004, we were under the impression it was illegal to family residence. We have come across many documents that I believe the town does not have, but the health department has. If you don't mind, I made some copies for you. And I will also give you some other copies that I have from the health department.
Okay, and do those documents certify that the building needs code for septic and more?
Yes, it does.
All right, so we'll take those instead. All right, and do you know how big the apartment is?
Yes, it is 1,524 square feet.
And how big's the whole house?
It's approximately 3,624 square feet.
Now, we did a site visit and it appears that you have two bedrooms in the accessory apartment?
Correct.
So you're only allowed one bedroom. So you may need to come back for a variance for this, but are you in contract now?
We are in contract, yes.
Okay, so is that, is that going to delay things?
It can, yes, it can delay things. Like I said, we were under the impression it was illegal to family due to the documents we had. We had confirmed everything through the town, through the health department prior to listing the home. And upon inspection, through the health department again, we do have these documents that do confirm this along with the septic size. So we do not know what, where it went wrong, where the discrepancy really is. So that's why we are here, hoping that we can just clarify all this.
Okay, and you also have an issue with the building department?
We do.
So let me, which do you think would be resolved quicker? The building department issue or the zoning issue?
I believe the building department possibly because they do not have these documents there.
Okay, but the building department was concerned about the height of some of the egress windows or windows for egress?
Correct.
The health department's not going to have any impact on that, right?
If I provide you with the information on notes, all this states that all this information is legit from back in 1961, 1962, and 1972, with the extension, with all the applications that were put in place.
Okay, when was the accessory apartment built? Can you tell from that from the documents?
The addition was put in, it shows sometime in, I'm sorry, give me one second here. It's showing in 2000, 1972, all these updates were put in with these additions with the extra second kitchen and the extra square footage and the finished basement.
In 1972?
Correct. And if you would like, I can pass these over?
Sure, if you want.
Yes, please.
Chrissy, do you know? 72, did that predate any zoning?
So the accessory apartment went in in 72?
No, no, yes, that's when it was built, correct. According to her documents.
I mean, it still would have required building permit. Therefore.
This one, okay.
Without building permit, it's not legal.
Okay. So if we were to grant the special use permit, I think you would need to get, well, you would need to get a variance to either have the second bedroom or you would have to somehow eliminate that as a bedroom by getting rid of the closet, I suppose. But if you wanted the variance for the second bedroom, we wouldn't be able to grant the special use permit tonight.
Okay. So how would I?
But before we go there, let me see if anybody else has any questions. Art?
No, it's the second bedroom. That's the, you know, that kind of stumps us, right? It's illegal. Like I say, getting rid of that closet, it's built in.
It's quite hard. As you saw, it's not something that I could have just added in. It's something that's built in in each section. So it's something that was built in upon building the home.
Would it be possible just to place the door out in the hallway and close the door that's in the bedroom?
I can do that, yes.
That would suffice, wouldn't it? If she had no access to that closet in the bedroom, would that suffice? And made it a hall closet, like a coat closet per se?
Oh, wait.
It's not a bedroom because it doesn't have a door on it?
No, closet. If she walled that closet door.
Well, if she walled it.
And then put the opening on the other side of the wall where the hallway is.
Or take the doors off and just use it as a shop.
Can I say something?
That, well, would the building department inspect that or?
So did you look at this? So this says, this, from the health department, says it's for four bedrooms. The house is six bedrooms, correct?
Four bedrooms upstairs, but it states finished, four rooms downstairs in the basement.
Yes, so the tank size is only for four bedrooms.
2,296 square feet. So that occupies what? Somewhere around five, six bedrooms or more.
If the septic was designed for four bedrooms, it would require something different for six, absolutely.
Yes.
And if you see the size of the septic tank, it obviously shows that it occupies more bedrooms, which nothing makes sense in all the, this, these documents. I know I feel this way.
The special use permit would be conditioned on Department of Health, except it's anywhere, right?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we would have something that said already that it was, in conformance, but it doesn't look like that's what this says, so, I guess they would have to go to the Department of Health. Just noticed the application said there's one bedroom in the apartment, but there, there's two? I guess we...
I think she wasn't using it as a bedroom, so...
Oh.
Yeah, it was being used definitionally.
It fits our definition.
Fits our definition of bedroom, I see.
And there's pictures of the room actually, so you can see at the very end, there's pictures of the whole apartment downstairs, so you can see and get an idea.
Phil, Phyllis, did you have some questions? Art, were you done?
I guess I, I would like to know how many bedrooms the septic tank is supposed to be able to manage. I don't know that...
And the sizes there in an email, we've broken it down in dimensions and size and everything in the email. I believe it's page three on those documents. To make it easy and we've already verified and checked everything, just to make it understandable to all of us.
So one of the conditions of the special use permit for, uh, it's two ten dash forty-seven C eight, no special use permit for an apartment shall be granted in any case where the Dutchess County Health Department has determined that the water sewage system serving the dwelling or dwellings in question is not capable of handling the additional demand upon it by the use and occupancy of the accessory apartment. So I mean, if you conditioned it upon the health department approval or waited for that information, I guess it wouldn't make a difference.
I think she's still gonna have to come back for a, a variance on the second bedroom.
Is that possible though, Lisa? It says the number of bedrooms in the apartment shall not be more than one.
So, I think in the same way that we can grant a variance for arguably for, if the square footage isn't thirty-five percent and other conditions, the board could, if they were so inclined, grant a variance for that. The issue is going to be setting a precedent for everyone who wants a two-bedroom accessory apartment going forward. But I think it's possible.
Yeah, I think this is, since it's been in existence so long, I mean, Phyllis, did you have anything else?
No.
Larry?
No.
Tony G? Tony S?
Uh, no.
Do you have an anticipated closing date yet?
We do not as of right now. Uh, they're assuming, I mean, it's only an assumption for right now, but we don't right now.
So Paul, um, so the assessors have always had this listed as four-bedroom, two-point-five bath. So I have that in my notes, and that's what it says on the, the property listing too, so...
So how many bedrooms are upstairs?
There's four bedrooms upstairs and it's always been listed as, you know, according to the documents when it was first, I guess from the health department, it showed a full three bedrooms. So I don't know where the difference went. I, I have no clue. Everything is showing as four bedrooms upstairs, it showed finished downstairs, I don't know. I have no clue, I'll be quite honest. And we purchased it as two bedrooms downstairs, four bedrooms upstairs, full three bathrooms. I mean, I couldn't have...
Was the accessory apartment used?
Well, I mean, I use it with my children. I haven't rented it out. I did in the past, but, you know, we had an issue. Um, we couldn't access the home because they told me that I had to update some things in it. I updated what I needed to, and then I just did some cosmetic fixes, but that was it. I haven't used it, I haven't rented it off.
You purchased in two thousand four?
Correct.
Alright, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? There's no one in present, anyone on Zoom?
Not seeing anybody.
I think, I don't think that we can approve the special use permit without the variance, without an application or dealing with the second bedroom.
So let's say for argument's sake, we just leave it as a one bedroom and possibly figure out that closet, would that be a possibility, just leaving it as is? You know, like, because technically it, it was initially there. It, it's not something that was restructured or added on since the house was built.
Right, but it's still two bedrooms in the accessory apartment. So either you have to somehow not make it a bedroom by walling, closing off that wall where the, where the closet is, are you gonna do that?
I can do that, yes.
But does that technically make it not a bedroom?
Yeah, then it's just a room. The, if, I mean, if you, if she really, you wall it off and so it's no longer a closet there, then it's just a room, right?
I mean, in order...
But is that what you wanna do, or do you wanna have a, a two-bedroom accessory apartment?
I would be okay with it, I've talked to the owners about it because they know about the situation, the new owners who are, um, purchasing it, and they were okay with that too. They're using it for themselves. So I, they just wanna make sure that everything as far as the documents show the way we listed it and they just wanna move forward.
I mean, building's not gonna sign off on anything until they have the septic approval and...
Okay. Alright, and they would, they would check and make sure that the, that the closet is walled off?
Yes.
Okay.
You said there's something else that the building department is looking at was the windows?
Yeah, so they would have, you know...
So there's some work that has to be done either.
So yeah, part of the criteria of, of approving this special use permit is, is making sure that it, you know, building and fire code is met and, you know, health department is met. So I mean, you could...
So does that still have to go through even though it was still there if we close up that closet? I still have to...
That's one, for here, for the zoning, we're, we're only dealing with the closet, the number of bedrooms.
Okay.
And, and the size and some other things. The building department has other issues.
Gotcha.
Which is, we, we need that proof and you, you would need that proof in order to approve the special use permit as part of the criteria.
So we just can't condition it on that?
I mean, yeah, you can condition it on that, yeah. But I wouldn't be able to sign off on your building permit until the building department gives me that information.
Or the health department.
Yeah, and the health department, yeah.
So what do we wanna do?
I mean, I think if there is a way to make the second apartment, the second bedroom not a bedroom, um, arguably you could then condition it on it not being a bedroom and on the, um, health department, you know, certifying the adequacy of the septic.
Even if we don't condition that, that's, that's a predetermined condition, right?
Well, technically, it's supposed to be satisfied prior to the granting of the special use permit. So, and then we also have the size issue where if you take the bedroom out, I don't know if that changes anything, um, in terms of the size of the apartment.
Still, it's still a room.
It's still available for the apartment, just not a bedroom. But what's to prevent it from being used as a bedroom in the future?
You can use, I mean, you can use any room as a bedroom, I suppose, but under our definition, if it, if it meets our definitions, it's a bedroom, whether you use it for your Peloton or, or... Alright, anyone else have any concerns?
So, if we, we were just looking at the size difference, what would be a reason to grant a variance of forty-two percent as opposed to thirty-five percent?
Um, I, I think the fact that it's pre-existing and it's kind of, it's not such a big increase would be, if I were to vote to approve it, that's, I think, without any other issues, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Anybody else? And it, is the sale condition, uh, that it be in a two-family house?
Yes.
Alright. Then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Then that motion carries. And again, you can either wait till the end of the night or find out tomorrow. Just make some notes on that. Okay, that brings us to item number five, uh, twenty-two Hampton Road. Is someone here? State your names.
Carla Del Truste.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you describe your application?
So we are looking to do an extension on the lower half of our house, above our living room, and, um, put in a family room and put in a front porch, it's all on the same side.
And you included some diagrams. And the rear addition goes along the same line of the house, is that correct?
Correct, everything goes along the same, the line of the house.
Okay, so there's no further encroachment on the side lateline?
No.
And the front porch, you have, um, an overhang over the front door?
Correct.
How much does the new front porch extend past that?
It's gonna come out, I think, a couple more feet.
How, okay, and how far past the steps? Does it cover the steps?
Uh, let's see. So the current one covers up to the first step.
Right.
This new one is gonna come out another foot or foot and a half.
Okay. I think those are the questions I have. Art?
And you said, and you told us that the rear addition, you're not gonna go as high as your second story, and I think that's halfway up that.
Correct, he's putting in the gable roof, it's just gonna go into...
Be that, huh?
Yeah.
No other questions?
I have no, I have no questions.
You may have to have some questions because I have to write notes.
What color?
Green.
Okay, Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
No questions.
Tony S?
Uh, no questions.
Alright. Okay, anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? Alright, anyone on Zoom? Alright, I don't see anyone. Okay, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number six, eight Salem Court. Why don't you state your name?
Nicole Morosco.
Okay, is there someone else?
My husband Benson is also on Zoom.
Okay, is he gonna say anything or is he just gonna listen to you?
Well, it depends if I can answer all the questions correctly.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
Yes.
Alright, why don't you describe this application?
So we're looking for a special use permit for the commercial vehicle that we have for our business to be parked on our residential lot in our driveway.
Okay, why don't you describe the commercial vehicle?
That's why he's here. It is a, a van, it's a Promaster, um...
It's a Ram twenty-five-hundred?
There you go.
Okay.
We do have two signs on there that show the business, there are two magnets. They are twelve inches by eighteen inches, but they're removable as well.
Okay.
And we do live in a cul-de-sac, it's not for purposes of advertisement on a regular basis. There's only six or so houses after our driveway, but they can be removed if needed while in our driveway.
Alright, what, what's the van used for?
So we own a pool business, so the van is used to do work at people's residence where we're doing, you know, either building a pool or maintaining a pool.
Okay, is it used to deliver any goods?
No.
Is it used to transport any people?
No.
Do you have, like, tools in there and...
Yeah, tools and, you know, whatever chemicals are needed for that actual job, you know, if we're doing a liner, the liner would be in there.
Okay. Those are the questions I have. Art?
Can we refer to some of the information we had in as far as questions, or is that... So, excuse me, with the pool business?
Yes.
I would have to guess that you have quite a supply of chlorine available to you somewhere. Do you keep that on your property?
So we actually have a building on our property that...
That's steel carpeted?
What was that?
The garage that's steel?
Correct, that has already been, you know, we do have a carpet for that. Um, part of that is used for personal as well as the business. I'm not sure how much chemicals we have on property at all times, we go through them pretty fast. Um, you know, we maintain a lot of pools, so we uses that on a daily basis. I'm not sure if there's like a certain amount of the time in there or...
Is that a concern to us, for, for you?
I have checked with Fred Riley, one of the building inspectors who also is a fire inspector, and, um, the only thing that he could find is that corrosive liquids, storing them in a residential property have to be, um, you just have to let the fire department know.
So the building, I believe, has been, has fire code, there is, um, fire alarms in there and fire extinguisher, whatever the code was for that building, there is.
Yes, and the building hasn't been CO'd yet, they're just waiting on electrical, right?
Correct, yes.
And I would remind the board that this is an application for the special use permit just for the commercial vehicle.
Right, but my concern was all the input we're getting from neighbors, I just wanna make sure. That's all.
Phyllis?
On average, how many times do you go in and out of the driveway?
Once, so he'll, you know, have the dogs for the day, he'll get everything he needs and he'll leave. I'd say on a very rare basis, he'll forget something and have to come back. But I try to help him not do that.
I have one more, sorry. Do you, does, does the business run into the evening at all? Do you come in like nine, ten o'clock at night after you run? I see your husband's got a nice smile on his face.
No, um, well, he's actually at Metro North working right now, he has a, another job. So he, um, usually works only until dark and not only, he can't work after dark. I would say he's home by dinnertime.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony G?
Are there employees or do you maintain?
We do have one employee, yes. And they drive in the vehicle together.
And if you were to estimate, you may have said, how big is the sign for the vehicle?
So it's actually, I have the exact, uh, twelve inches by eighteen inches. Um, they're vehicle magnets and there's two of them.
That's all I have.
Tony S?
Okay, I guess the other customary question, uh, on these things is whether there's a way to, uh, put the vehicle in, in another, let's say in a structure? You have like a, a, another garage there? Maybe you have two garages, right?
Correct, so the one garage, um, that we have, that we just built, at some point it will be accessible for the vehicle. Right now, the driveway doesn't connect to it, so there's a lip pretty high that a vehicle wouldn't be able to get in there. In the future, that is something that we're looking into doing, it's just hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so you're, you're looking in the future when that building is approved, but to potentially just put the commercial vehicle inside that garage?
If need be.
If need be?
We'd be open to that. It wasn't something that we had planned on from the beginning, but it's definitely been enough. It wasn't something that we had planned on from the beginning, but it's definitely big enough to fit the commercial vehicle, yes.
Okay, and then I'm just, I know this is supposed to be limited to the commercial vehicle, but the chemicals, do you have a separate building for those or are they stored in one of these garages?
They're stored in the garage.
In the, in the, and you're existing?
Not connected to the house, the.
The new, the new, okay. So part of that is gonna be devoted to storing chemicals and stuff like that?
Yeah, and as I said, we go through them very quickly, so I would say on average, there's not, more than anything, it's tools and, you know, we do use the building for personal things such as my kids' toys and things like that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I see you have a diagram where you're, which part of it is gonna be used for your supply, it's okay. All right, thank you.
All right, and for the record, there have been a number of, a number of correspondence regarding this application, some in favor, some against. Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, anyone on Zoom?
Few of my neighbors are on there, I'm not sure.
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak, you could just unmute yourself or?
Each of the, all the correspondents will be added to the record, so if you've, if you've written a letter, you don't need to comment additionally unless you want to.
I see somebody on the iPhone trying to unmute maybe? If you're on a, on a phone, you can use star six to unmute? Try star six?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Will the vehicle, will the vehicle be parked on the street at all?
No.
Okay. That was my question, because there's a lot of kids and it would be, it would impede the line of sight for other vehicles coming down the street and school buses.
Absolutely, it's definitely large, so we park it in our.
Okay. Thank you.
We're supposed to swear when people, when they.
There's so much to comment.
All right, that's true, it was a question, all right, next.
iPhone seven looks unmuted.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. iPhone?
You might need to turn up volume.
Now, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Nothing yet.
It's not working.
Nope, we still can't hear you.
It's okay, they tried.
They have a teenage son, he has to nodding.
Bringing in the big guns, the teenage son.
Do you know which address they are?
Um, they are directly across the street from me, so they are, I believe it's seven.
Still, nope, can't hear you.
I don't know why, they're not muted, they're not.
And you can hear them moving, so I don't know why you.
Was that them?
I think so.
I think there was here, I think there was somebody here.
Ben's not muted either, so.
Yeah.
He's trying real hard, but it's not happening.
No.
Nope, still can't hear you.
Apparently he's bored, thumbs up.
All right. That'll make part of the record. Okay, anyone else that can speak?
I'll, I'll say something, as far as the chemicals.
All right, I'm gonna swear, gonna have you sworn in though.
Hold up.
Okay.
Okay.
State your name.
My name is Benson Morosco.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
I do. So all I was gonna say about the chemicals, because you asked a couple of times, most of it is all powdered stuff. There's very minimal corrosive liquid at all, I only order as needed and it's gone right away, so everything else is in powder form. So not, nothing to really worry about, but we will let the fire department know and make sure that's all good.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, anyone else? Okay, then I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And again, you can. Next is Reed Road. Is someone here for that?
I'm here, but there's somebody on Zoom that's running.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, we're on the Zoom.
Okay, and why don't you state your name?
Steve Miller with Beatty and Watson for the applicant.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
I do.
All right, why don't you describe this?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer's gonna take here.
All right, just a brief flag, good evening, Chairman members of the board, Taylor Palmer with the law firm, Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicants, tonight, as you are with you, Steve Miller of Beatty and Watson, were appearing before you in connection with our application for a lot line provision that's necessitated for a couple area variances that are before you tonight. The director, we do understand the public hearing noticed signage and associated mailings were completed in accordance with the zoning requirements. We did appear, planning board in connection with this matter, and for the benefit of the board and those that may be attending this evening, I'll provide just a brief summary to illustrate, or just share, if I'm able. While I'm not, but Steve, if you're there and you can put up the site plan, I'll just lay it out for the board, the proposal that we're looking at. The premises are located on the north side of Reed Roads, with its two existing lots that are presently improved by residences, so each lot eleven and fifteen have a existing lot today. They're, both lots are existing conditions, they're both non-conforming under the existing conditions with respect to their lot size. Thank you, Steve, or whoever is holding up the site plan. So as shown on this lot line revision plaque that's being held up before you, and it's all included in our submission, there was a filed map that dates back to eighteen eighty-one, so that's filed map three fourteen, and the lots were separated by unopened paper streets, so that's Cedar Street right there in the middle of the filed map, oh, excuse me, of the lot line adjustment map. And the filed map indicates that those lot lines generally comprise the properties that were, you know, a series of lots, kind of like the old days of Long Island, cookie cutter lots. And in accordance with our discussions with the title company, this actually came to us originally as a title matter, the lot line revision application is just to allow the applicants to correct their deeds, and there are certain meets and bounds descriptions that go with that. So each of these resulting lots will own effectively one-half of the lands that were shown as the Cedar Street, Paper Street. So just sort of in summation, the application will make lot fifteen less non-conforming, which is actually within regards to the existing shed that's on lot fifteen, which currently approaches, shown on the plan, onto lot eleven. So when we shift the property line over in this lot line revision, that shed will now be fully on fifteen Reed Road. And just, we'd also note just for the record, the instant application doesn't create any new lots, it doesn't conclude any proposed development. So with respect to that lot line revision, it does require area variances for the non-conforming eleven Reed Road as far as lot size, width, and frontage. So that's, again, because we're adjusting lines that really the center of the road for each parcel, even though they're not performing conditions today, it does make that lot non-conforming. We did detail our support of this application in our narrative, and we did have a chance to review the town's memorandum regarding the request that are before you, and we believe that it is consistent with the character, I mean, again, it ultimately reduces the non-conformities on one lot and slightly sort of modifies the existing non-conformities of another, but really it just gets rid of a unique situation dating back to eighteen eighty-one regarding this Cedar Street, Paper Street. Ultimately, you know, certainly Steve can answer any more physical questions on the plans if the board has any, but naturally, that's the request, again, no development proposed, we're literally just shifting half of that non-constructed, unopened paper street to each of the lots, and the lot lines go in line and ultimately make a better condition for the shed that's already, that's an existing condition onto another lot. Now we'll all be on the correct lot.
Who, who owns each of the properties?
So the, the applicants that are before you are Reed Innovation Center Annex and Reed Innovation Center Annex Two. Those are the LLCs that own the lots.
Okay, all right. And that's, that's all I have. Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, I don't see anyone, anyone in Zoom, on Zoom? All right, I don't see anything, so I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay? That brings us to.
Thank you very much for your time.
Chair. Brings us to item number eight, Nine Hundred Duchess Turnpike.
Good evening, I do have a presentation if I can just plug this in?
Nope, share, nope, share your screen on Zoom, I'm sorry. Yeah, are you on Zoom already?
I am not on the Zoom already.
All right, yeah, that's the only way to do it, otherwise, yeah.
Then I will just use it for myself, I'm sorry, you guys don't wanna see the presentation, but you do have the application materials before you. So my name's Natalie Quinn, I'm a planner with KRC Consulting, representing the applicant.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your ability?
I do. Great, so what we're talking about here today is Nine Hundred Duchess Turnpike, which is AP Packaging Facility. Just some site details, this project had, you know, originally got site plan approval in twenty twenty-one, an amended site plan approval in twenty twenty-two in February. They are actively doing a lot of the improvements that were approved under those previous approvals, so they, they do have active building permits at the moment. What we are here talking about today is they are seeking a height variance for a small portion of the building to allow them to raise that roof to sixty-five feet, where only forty feet is permitted. And so the, within the application, there should be some photos of, we did do a rendering to kind of illustrate where that piece will be. It is on the, now I'm trying to work, so it is on the northeast corner of the building, and it is. There are, you know, there are some existing extrusions on the building, but the highest one goes to about forty-four, forty-five feet, so this will be taller than that at sixty-five feet, but.
You keep saying, are you saying sixty-five or sixty-nine?
Sixty-five, sorry, six-five. So if you look at the actual, the sixty-five is measured from the interior, so we noticed it for sixty-nine feet. I think it's a typo in the materials, you actually have to go from the ground elevation up, so I think what you actually need is sixty-nine square feet. Okay, I will take your word on that, I did not do that measurement myself, so. There's, so if you look at the packet, there's one drawing which shows the height to the interior floor, and that's the sixty-five, and then what you supplied, there's another one that shows to the ground level, and that comes at like sixty-eight and high change, so we rounded it up for purposes of the variance to sixty-nine square feet, or sixty-nine feet. Okay, so sixty-nine, so a twenty-nine-foot variance then is what we are seeking, and I will just go through the five prongs of the questions of, that you guys are considering here. So will the change be undesirable? We are stating that it will not be undesirable, the AP Packaging Facility is about four hundred and fifty-five feet away from Route Forty-four, so it is set back and there is a tree-lined kind of buffer, I would say, between that road, so it's, it's not, it's not easily seen. The property line for the Eastdale project is about six hundred and forty feet from the northeast side, so an approximately almost twelve hundred feet from the southwest side of the, of the facility. So it is a far distance from that as well. And then in terms of the, so it, you know, it is in an industrial site, so any views of the site already are of an industrial building, right, of a, of an industrial building with trucks and loading docks. So this, this extrusion is kind of hidden towards, I would say, the side of the property that is further away from Eastdale and, and not, not extremely visible, although it is visible as being the tallest portion of that building. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. So for this equipment, I don't know how familiar you are with the facility and what they, they're making plastics and packaging materials, right? So what they are, the material there is called a, I'm trying to remember, I, I got a crash course in what this mechanism is going to do. So it is a blown extrusion machine, right? So the, the input is getting melted, and then it gets put through this, through this kind of casting that then blows air up into it, and so it has to be tall, right, because the plastic is getting blown out like a balloon, and the, and the height is required so that it can cool, and by the time it gets to the top of that multi-story kind of balloon, it is cooled, and then it is folded over, and then it starts to be cut and packaged. So by having this extrusion, this extrusion kind of device, right, that allows you to, it allows the company both to, A, just like internalize a portion of the, of the production that is currently being farmed out to other companies, so they can bring that inside and make their system more efficient. It also allows them to be more diverse, and they can produce plastics of different, of different.
Thicknesses?
Thicknesses, yeah, that's the word I was looking for, of different thicknesses and multi-layer. So that's this new equipment that they're looking to seek, it must be multi-story, that is kind of the nature of the device. There are, there are options of purchasing one that would be around forty feet, but for the production that they're gonna get out of that versus the cost of this machinery and the cost of installing it, that is not worth it for them to make that, to make that investment. This allows, I think, some nine hundred units per hour, whereas a smaller device would only allow three hundred, so just the cost to the output is not gonna make sense for them. So for that, I would just point back to the intent of this district, right, which is facilitating businesses, especially industrial businesses, and their efficient operation, which is what they're seeking to do with this new equipment that does require this height variance. For the next point, whether the requested variance is substantial. So I think numerically, right, we're talking about forty-five to sixty-nine feet. I think some people would say that that twenty-nine-foot variance is numerically substantial. However, this is only on a small portion of the building, right? So the entire building is just over three hundred and eighty thousand square feet. The portion of the roof that is gonna be extruded is just over fourteen hundred, one thousand four hundred and eighty-five to be exact, so less than point zero one percent of the building, of the building's roof space is going to be extruded to this, to this height above what the code allows. So while the number of the extrusion, I think, is, I think you could see that as substantial, the effect that this is gonna have on the surrounding area, I would say, is, is not extremely, is not substantial, and then the area is minimal, the area of the roof space that is being extruded is minimal. And then whether it will have adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions. For this, we answered no as well, this is an existing roof space that already has runoff that is managed with the onsite stormwater facilities, it is just being increased, so no environmental impacts. And then I would say that, you know, whether or not this is self-created, this hardship is self-created by the applicant trying to expand their business and improve efficiencies within their production system, but we hope that the benefit that they are going to be seeking outweighs any negative impacts that this board sees on the community. So that is my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell me, will the process involve any additional noise?
Inside, it's quite a noisy operation inside what's in there, I.
I mean, noise outside?
Uh, no, it'll, it'll, I, I can come back with exact information on this, but. but it will not be able to be distinguished from existing noise onsite.
Alright, and do you expect the addition of any other increases in the height or alterations to the roof line of the building?
Not at this time, there's not any for seen. Um, I, I would hate to pigeonhole our client and say that there's never going to be a need to improve their production system, but for right now, um, this is a very expensive piece of equipment they're purchasing, um, and very unique. And I, I don't, I don't, we do not, we have not discussed any other additions to roof height right now.
Can we, if we're going to grant this, can we condition it on, on the, on this application? So that in later day, they just couldn't raise the entire building?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if they went to raise, they'd need another variance.
Because they're doing a different, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's all I have. Any, well, will there be any additional, like, off-gassing or anything like that from the process?
No.
I'm good. Her detail was satisfactory.
I have no questions.
Thank you.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony Jay?
Any other changes to the overall site or just the area that you're looking to raise the roof?
I mean, there's a number of changes going on that are already approved and, and building permits. They're, they're refitting out this entire building. Um, and so I think there's, there's portions of the building that are currently used for other businesses, other operations, right? Formerly, um, Bosse's had a section and stuff. So they are current, continuously expanding this building and building out their operations. So, um, I imagine they'll, they'll have amendments or, or items before the city, the town in the future as they continue to expand.
So this is only one aspect of it overall?
As they're, as they're, I mean, they're, they're trying to capture everything they can foresee in terms of how their, how their business will expand. Um, but I think a lot of, this will be the, one of the most, um, I think, uh, physical alterations, right? A lot of the internal alterations I don't think are visible. Uh, it's them fitting out the space, which is a lot of what they're doing there.
Do they foresee any additional traffic, deliveries, or anything like that?
Uh, no, the opposite, the less, the less, right? Because right now, this portion of the production process is actually being, is actually being farmed out. So that's more incoming and outgoing. So now, as these, the, uh, after the items get delivered, right? The plastic little balls that then become bubble wrap. I, I learn a little bit more about the process every time I talk to the client. So now I'm at about 40%. Um, so when those get delivered, so now everything else is done, is done in-house until they're ready to ship things out, so.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, thank you.
No questions.
Alright. And I also note there's a letter from Eastdale, um, expressing support. So that'll be made part of the record. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? Anyone on Zoom? Alright, I'm not seeing anyone. So I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Alright, next is item number nine. Uh, 189 Manchester Road? Is someone here from that application? Okay, alright.
It's me again. Uh, is it a, is it a task to, to get onto the Zoom or?
Um, if you have the agenda, you just need the meeting ID. I can give you the agenda.
I just, I don't know how much you guys have in front of you and I hate trying to explain things.
Or she can just go to the town website. Just click on it, right?
I suppose, but it's, if you have them already in here, you just do it. It's easier to just put the ID and the password.
I don't have any questions.
Do you need any help with that or? There you go.
Great. Sorry, I should've just taken the time to do that.
Are you still in there? Just, just to get your name out for the record.
Okay, I think that should work now. Oh. I'm just-
You got it muted or?
I am, it-
On the bottom of your screen, it should show.
Oh, it does? Oh yeah, it does. Look at that.
That's probably picking it up from the front, I guess.
Right.
Testing? Okay. Alright, so my name is Natalie Quinn. Um, I am representing the applicant, um, for, for 189 Manchester, all space self-storage. Um, so this item before you today, do I need to do my oath again? The item before you today is an interpretation, um, of the code. So the storage facility, um, is a, is a large site, 3.42 acres. Uh, the majority of the site is, is the storage, the storage units. Uh, there is a existing, um, structure onsite that you can see in this bottom corner in the left-hand, um, picture. Um, it was an existing structure that was converted to the office for management and has been running, um, for folks coming in to, to book their spaces. A lot of that process now has become, uh, online, virtual, that you sign up, um, for one of these, these storage units. So that office space is largely unused these days. Uh, folks use a fob key to get into the facility, um, right? So you, once you get a fob key to get in, you use that to get in. And then on your way out, you have to use your fob key again to get out past the gates. The reason why it's done both ways like that, um, is that historically, there has been some issues of folks not paying for their storage units and then kind of coming in maybe in the evenings, following somebody else in, clearing out their units and leaving as a way to kind of avoid the arrears payments. Um, so this, this, this system of the two-way fob is used by a lot of facilities these days. Um, and that does sometimes result in somebody kind of being trapped inside, um, in the evenings and they either call onsite to come help them get out or sometimes call, um, police departments, uh, if, if they, if they can't get out of the facility. So what we were requesting or what the applicant wanted to do, the client, was, um, convert the office space to an accessory dwelling unit to be occupied only by staff, by a management manager for the facility. Um, and that person could be onsite and reachable by phone or by a buzzer. So if there was either, either the folks getting stuck in there or folks just needing help, um, in, in off-hours, that an onsite manager, uh, could assist clients with that. So the section of the code, um, that, I, I think what we're asking for an interpretation on, um, is it was unsure whether or not, uh, accessory, a dwelling unit was accessory to the, to the primary business. Um, so in looking, you know, we kind of looked at this section of the code 210-46, um, as a way to kind of gauge this, and these are accessory apartments in commercial districts, right? Um, and the reasons for allowing those, uh, are kind of close to what, many of those apply to what I've just explained in terms of protecting and preserving the property, provide additional security, especially in evening hours, um, meet the housing needs of custodian, um, workers of the principal business use. Um, and so where we're, where we're, um, indicating that we believe this accessory dwelling unit is permitted is in the section, um, of the code under D2, any uses customarily incidental to the principal permitted use. So that's, you know, I guess that's, in a nutshell, uh, we feel that the accessory dwelling, uh, is incidental to this use. It's not going to be rented out or Airbnb or anything like that. This will be for employees of the company, um, to be there to be 24-hour kind of management of the facility. So happy to answer any questions.
So when you say employees, do you intend it being like a rotation? Or is it just, just one?
No, I think it would be, I think it would be one, one employee at a time. Um, how long they, you know, but, if they switch out employees.
Do you, uh, do you know how many other storage facilities, um, this client operates?
I don't know the total number of that.
So my next question, if you did know that number, is like, how many other ones have onsite residents?
Um, yeah, I could, I could get that information back for the board in terms of how many. Um, I know we do know of a few. I think there's, um, one in Hyde Park. We were just checking and looking on, on competitors. All of our, our, at our own sites, I can come back with that information. If, um, that's crucial to the board's decision, we can adjourn the matter and come back. But, um, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Art?
So this would be a, a full-fledged apartment, right?
Yes.
It's going to be a regular apartment, but in that building?
Yes, it's a smaller space, but it would, it would be a-
Meet all the codes?
Yeah. The, I think that would be required.
Now how about, you got me a little confused. If you need a fob to get out, what, and somebody gets stuck in there and they're looking to reduce theft apparently is the biggest concern?
Mm-hmm.
How will the person that's in that house be able to resolve that if somebody sneaks in with somebody else's fob?
So they'd have to, they'd be able to address the person, figure out what account it was. So their, your fob keeps, stops working if your account goes into arrears, right? So I think they would address it in terms of, here's, here's the, figure out what account, uh, that's associated with. It's in arrears and that, there'd be a payment, um, associated with removing those items.
What they could do, as you indicated in the beginning, they could borrow my fob or come in behind me, sneak in behind me, so the person living there really can't resolve that issue correctly?
They probably can't stop them getting in. Uh, I mean, they, if they could, they, if they notice someone waiting for another vehicle to get in, they might be able to go over and speak to that person and see what the issue was. But, um, I guess the question is, like, yes, someone could still get in to the facility.
But this would probably limit it, is what they're looking to do?
Limit it, and, and then the, what, what's happened in the past is folks then, because different timing of packing up materials, don't always have somebody to follow out, especially in evening hours later, you know, later in the day when it's not a lot of folks coming into the facility. So that's when they get trapped, when they realize that you need a fob to get out and their fob no longer works.
One other question. Is this apartment going to be at the only entrance? Is there only one entrance? I haven't been out to that facility.
Yes, is at the, at the-
So they will have direct view of that?
Yeah, it's right next, right next to it, yep.
Okay, I'm, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Phyllis?
So the employee is there.
Mm-hmm.
Is shift work? If, if I'm doing a nine-to-five, am I still living there after hours? Is there a, I mean, can there be a family in there? How is, how do you flush this out is what I'm trying to understand?
It becomes a housing dwelling unit for that employee. So they, they don't vacate that unit. You know, they're there full-time, they live there.
Okay.
Right, so, um-
They're on call all the time?
I would assume so, but I, I, I don't have that exact information. But they are living there all time. It becomes their dwelling unit, it's kind of a benefit of the position, right? Um, and I assume they would be largely on call. And probably in the evening hours is when they would need to definitely be there.
No further questions?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Larry?
Like last year, like, how many times did someone get stuck in there?
I don't have that number, sorry.
I think that's all.
Are there recurrent office hours? Like, is somebody there during the day?
Um, right now, a lot of it is just online, like I said. So that office isn't, isn't functioning, the office space isn't, um, I could look if it's open at all, but it's, we, you know, we went by the other day and there's no, there's no one staffing that office at regular hours right now.
So this wouldn't like expand office hours and?
No, so a lot of the, a lot, most of the, most of the facility will still be able to be run online kind of with, with fob keys, right? So you sign up, so a lot of that would still happen, that it's all booked and, and set up online. I think this is for, for onsite maintenance, for assistance if folks do need a physical person to assist with something, their lock's not working, they can't open, you know? Um, or there's someone stuck inside.
Okay, I was out at that site on July 5th and I stopped in and, and there was somebody staffing that office. You know, I parked and I went to the front door and went inside and inquired about what the plan was for this particular, uh, you know, accessory unit. So the, the guy that was on duty said that he knew nothing about it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and maybe was I talking about one on Salt Point Turnpike? And I said, no, I'm talking about this one here and here's the picture. Uh, so he didn't have any idea of, of what the plan was, but it's certainly an indication that the place is staffed, probably during regular hours. So, I mean, um, you know, somebody, somebody raised that question as to whether, whether, whether it is staffed, and it is. Okay, I don't know if it's staffed seven days a week, but it certainly, it certainly is staffed.
What time was that?
Uh, midday, I think, you know, maybe, uh, maybe 11 or 12, you know, 11 o'clock in the morning, 12 noon. And there's another building immediately next to it, which is like a, a maintenance building and there's another guy working out of there. It looks like he may have been a, a guy involved with, you know, maintaining the, the buildings. And he didn't know anything, but, uh, he said, well, you know, it's nothing we're aware of. But, you know, there, there were two people there at the time I was there.
So yeah, I, it's, I think it's quite easy to have working staff people out of facility during working hours, right? Nine-to-five kind of aspects like that who are doing that work. Um, I, I don't know that they would necessarily be eliminated if they're there doing maintenance, right? But I think this is an additional person who is there in typically off-hours. Um, and it's not approved yet, so I don't know if they're necessarily telling their employees, uh, that they're going to have a unit there, um, because we're still having discussions.
Neither of these guys knew, knew of this plan or this proposal. Uh, so, uh, for whatever that says.
Okay.
Could I just add one, two more questions?
One or two? Which one is it, one or two?
I will not ask three. So, how, what will be the square footage of the apartment once it's converted? And I'm using the term apartment for lack of a better term.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't think they've drawn out floor plans, but I can tell you what the square footage of it is now of the facility.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that when they first came to talk to us about this, it was, it was more conceptual. It was, could we use this, for this purpose? Not so much we have a specific plan drawn up and we're ready to go. So it didn't come into the building department like a, a building permit that we denied. It was more of a initial conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They, they may not have that.
Is it?
Well, I might have another one here, she, she gets to mine.
Sorry, I'm just trying to, I want to give you the exact number for how big the facility is. Um-
So it's really just, uh, open for interpretation at this point?
Yeah, the floor plans have, you know, it's the beginning of the phase is to see if they can do that here. And then if they can do that, then they'll come up with floor plans and alert staff that this change is going to be occurring and, but right now it's, they're just trying to get the board's interpretation, right?
Thank you. That's it.
That's it? Okay, um, I'd like to hear the input about the number of other facilities. So anybody object to this being adjourned till next month?
She's, she's willing to adjourn. I think you mentioned you are willing to adjourn if we don't-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to come back with information.
And maybe you could have the more idea of the actual square footage by then.
Mm-hmm, square footage and the number of facilities that this property owner owns that has apartments as well as-
If you have something to support that it's customary and incidental to, so-
Absolutely.
If you can find a bunch of other places that have onsite accessory apartments, that would be helpful to you.
Okay, great. It doesn't have to be just your company. It can be any company's, but, huh.
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, I can do that? Come back? I can do that, come back with that information.
Or is this? Have anything to do with a shortage of staffing and is it an inducement to get someone to work? You know?
I mean, it's absolutely, it's absolutely a benefit to somebody, yeah.
Track somebody and.
Who wants to work a night shift. Yeah.
Okay, then I'll move to adjourn this to the August fourteenth. Uh, meeting.
Check.
Any discussion? All this is favored, signify by aye.
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 Any, any opposed, then that motion carries. Okay.
And Natalie, there's a, there is a staff report, uh, that, I think you guys got it. But just make sure that the, the questions are kind of described a little bit in there too, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for being so prepared, by the way.
All right, that brings us to twenty-two forty-five South Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is James Karas. Um, here this evening from J M C, um, on behalf of the applicant Splash Car Wash Incorporated. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Glenn Shealy and Mr. Chris David, uh, from J M C. And, uh, we're here this evening, uh, for your consideration of an initial presentation. Uh, for the request of three area variances for a proposed car wash redevelopment located at. Two-two-four-five South Road in the town of Poughkeepsie.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you for just a second.
Yep.
I'm going to point out that I think there's going to be one rec, one recusal on this, on this matter. Um, and so I'm going to ask each of you to swear, confirm, affirm that you tell the truth tonight.
I do.
I do.
Very good, okay, go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
Um, I have a brief presentation, uh, for you this evening, um, and I'll share my screen in a moment. But first I'll just give you a brief, uh, little history background of the application. Um, planning board has declared itself lead agency for Seeker, uh, back in February of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we have received, uh, numerous and detailed comments, uh, from staff, town consultants and county agencies. And we've responded to those in writing with a plan re-submission and the planning board has scheduled a public hearing, uh, upcoming on July twentieth. Um, so, uh, because the, the planning board, um, has declared itself lead agency under Seeker. Uh, but there is no determination as far as a negative declaration, your board, um, cannot take any action tonight. But, uh, we're here to, uh, make the presentation, get some additional feedback, uh, as we, uh, work through, uh, the site plan comments with the planning board. So with that being said, um, I'd like to share my screen.
Yep.
Is that up there on the screen for everyone?
It is, yeah.
Okay, great. So the, uh, site that we're talking about this evening is, uh, located at two-two-four-five South Road. On Route nine at the corner of South Gate Drive. Um, what you're looking at is an aerial photograph of the property taken, uh, last summer, uh, in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the property size is just under one acre at point nine-five acres in the B H Highway Business Zone. Um, it is currently unoccupied and vacant and has been for some time, it was formerly the Umberto's Restaurant. And interestingly, it was, uh, also a car wash with a existing car wash tunnel. And you can see that, uh, on the site plan, um, highlighted in the, uh, yellow dashed area there. Um, so it was a mixed-use development. Um, it has two existing curb cuts, uh, one, uh, located along, uh, Route nine on South Road, uh, which we're proposing to maintain. And, uh, the second being, um, at the intersection of South Gate Drive and, uh, South Road. Uh, which we're proposing to close, um, to improve that intersection. Um, I will also note that the site is, uh, almost a hundred percent impervious, uh, with ninety-two percent impervious coverage. Uh, consisting of the asphalt parking areas and existing building. And, uh, as I mentioned, we're seeking your consideration for three area variances. Uh, we also require site plan approval and special permit from the planning board. Uh, as well as additional outside agency approvals from the D O T and Dutch discount. So, uh, now I'll just give a brief overview of the proposed site plan. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, this is a car wash proposal to be branded as a Washco Car Wash. Uh, we're proposing to completely remove the existing building and the existing structure. Um, and replace it with one brand new car wash tunnel totaling fifty-four hundred square feet in size. Um, if we look at the notes on the right-hand side of the screen, just from top to bottom. Um, applicants, or excuse me, uh, customers will enter the site making a right-hand turn on Southbound, uh, South Road. They will, uh, queue in one of the three provided queuing lanes, they'll approach ordering kiosks where they'll purchase their wash package. Cars will be released, one car vehicle at a time, and they will proceed to enter the wash. If they have, uh, entered the site in error or they decided not to continue through the wash, there is a bypass lane providing. Three hundred and sixty degree access around the facility. And once, uh, receiving their wash, they can exit, um, the requisite one hundred and fifty feet, uh, exiting area is provided. In addition to speed bumps to remove excess water. And customers can either, um, exit the site via a right-hand turn only on two South Road. Or use one of the popular free vacuum stations that are located in this, uh, central parking area here, which is a popular feature of all the washes. So that's, uh, an overview of, of the proposed site plan for this new high-quality wash. And, uh, we're also, uh, proposing some landscape improvements here. I mentioned, uh, initially that, uh, the existing site is ninety-two percent, uh, covered by impervious surfaces. We are bringing that into conformity, uh, by bringing it below the seventy-five percent, um, threshold, down to seventy-one percent. With some interior landscaping and also, uh, robust, um, planting on the South Gate Drive frontage. Which, uh, we hope will effectively, um, mitigate visual impacts to the residential neighborhood. And zoning district to the south and to the west. So that's an overview of our, our site plan and, uh, Glenn from the Car Wash Group is here to provide any details of operations if needed. But I will continue to, um, go over the, uh, area variances that we are requesting this evening. Um, there are three, um, the first being, uh, the lot size, uh, minimum. There is a two-acre minimum lot size here requirement, uh, for the car wash use. The existing site is just under one acre at point nine-five, so we are requesting relief of one point zero five acres. Um, and the second two, uh, area variances have to do with, uh, dimensional setback distance to. Uh, the existing residential zoning district to our south and to our west. Um, the first being a five-hundred-foot setback from any residential use in a residential district. The nearest residential use is to our south on the corner of Oriole, Oriole Drive, located approximately seventy-one feet. Uh, requesting relief of approximately four hundred and twenty-nine feet in that regard. And the second dimensional requirement or variance we are seeking is, uh, for the trash enclosure location, which is located in the corner of the property here. Uh, where fifty feet is required to a zoning district or residential zoning district. Twenty-four point five feet is provided and twenty-four point five feet is requested of relief. So I will, um, continue to, uh, just go over some of the, um, standards of review here. Um, first being, um, you know, will the, uh, will the application result in a negative impact to the neighborhood? And, you know, we submit that, uh, this will positively impact the area, uh, the existing site is, um, underutilized, it is vacant, it's in disrepair. Um, it'll be cleaned up and renovated and it will be maintained in a, in a nice, you know, visual and aesthetically pleasing fashion. So we'll feel that this will be visually, uh, beneficial to the neighborhood. Um, whether the benefit can be sought by some other method. Now, the applicant cannot change the site of the existing parcel, um, nor can we change the, the boundary of the, the zoning district. However, um, we can meet all of the, um, specially permitted, um, or special permit requirements with regard to visual screening and parking. Queuing and so on and so forth. And if the variances are substantial, um, while on paper, these may seem substantial. You know, they are the minimum required, uh, to achieve the proposed site plan here. Um, the applicant is, we've taken great care to design the site, uh, within the point nine-five acre property size. And, uh, in fact, um, you know, this is the, uh, the fifth site that, uh, Glenn and his group have worked on with me here. In our group at J M C and, uh, um, all four of those other sites. Um, number one are all on state roads, they're all on state highways and they're all under two acres. Um, so there's one in White Plains that's, um, uh, one point one seven acres. And it has the same, uh, same size wash tunnel, one wash tunnel. There's one, um, Route fifty-nine in Clarkstown, that's one point eight acres, so it's under two acres. Um, there's one in town southeast that's on a one point four acre development area. And that has one wash tunnel and three queuing lanes similar to this. And there's one also proposed in the town of Yorktown in Westchester County, that's also one point four or five acres, so it's under two. And has three queuing lanes, one wash tunnel, so on and so forth, so. Uh, the other similarity with these applications is that they're all on, uh, parcels that directly abut residential zoning districts. In fact, uh, the, the, the White Plains location directly abuts an elementary school. So visual noise aesthetics was of extreme concern with that regard and the applicant is able to mitigate all of those. So, um, this location, um, in the town of Poughkeepsie on the state highway is not unique to this use. It's not unique to what, um, Glenn's group is seeking, um, as far as the location. In fact, it is exactly what they're seeking, um, with, uh, state highway commercials, commercial zone, commercial corridor with. Very good, uh, pass-by traffic volumes on a daily basis. And then is the, is the difficulty self-created? It is because the, the applicant is seeking to purchase and redevelop the property, however, um, therein is not the, uh, basis to deny the. Deny the application for the area variances, um, and we're seeking to develop the site within the confines of the existing, uh, property boundary here, so. Um, I think those were the main points we wanted to touch upon here for our initial presentation. Um, happy to, um, go over any questions the board has, answer any questions and, um, we can. Go from there, happy to entertain that, thank you.
Can you tell me how many, um, cars can fit into the three-lane queue?
Yes, uh, dimensionally on the site plan, there's queuing spaces for twenty-one vehicles. Um, as they enter the site and choose a lane to, to continue to purchase a wash, so that complies with the, uh. The requirements under the zoning code for queuing spaces where I think only one, uh, excuse me, only eight vehicles are required for each wash tunnel for queuing spaces. And we're providing twenty-one.
And how about exiting?
Exiting, um, the wash, uh, there's appro, approximately a hundred and fifty-one linear feet of, um, uh. Driving distance from the wash exit to the right turn only onto Route nine. Um, and we see, you know, maybe a, a split between vehicles choosing to just simply exit the site after the wash. Or also, you know, uh, choosing to utilize one of the variable, um, self-serve vacuum stations as well.
Do you have an idea of the noise generated?
Yes, so the automatic car wash tunnel is fully contained, all of those operations are inside. So there's very little noise generated from the wash itself. There is a centrally located vacuum station here, and if you can see my mouse, the cursor circling this here.
Yes.
Um, it is located interior to the site here, um, so it's a central vacuum, uh, system. These are modern, state-of-the-art, they're in an enclosure, they're fully attenuated and muffled and. This information is directly from the manufacturer where, um, they took sound readings on their specifications and at ten feet away. You're reading approximately sixty-nine decibels and then that exponentially decreases when you get to thirty feet away from the unit, you're down to about thirty-eight decibels, so. Um, noise here is not, um, a huge impact as far as the vacuum stations are concerned. Um, anecdotally, in fact, when Glenn and I were getting our certificate of occupancy to open the White Plains location. Town staff came out to the site, um, to visit everything and do a walkthrough and to, uh, you know, they wanted to hear the vacuum, so. You know, they asked Glenn to turn the vacuums on after they got there and he said, well, they've been on the entire time you've been here, so. Um, that's, you know, anecdotally how quiet they, they are, so, um, it's not a, noise is not a, uh, impact here that, um, isn't mitigated.
Uh, okay. All right.
Yeah, I think I've got a few questions, sorry. Go back to your vacuums, you're saying, are you saying that the vacuum is always running or is it on, on demand only?
Glenn, you want to jump in there and talk a little bit about those details?
Yep, so the, the car, the, the vacuum area would only run when a car is in the facility of that vacuum, one of the vacuum stalls. We put loops in the ground, um, that detect, detect a magnetic field the same as at a traffic light. And that would turn the vacuum system on and immediately off, um, as the cars pull in and out of the vacuum area. To reduce also consumption of energy. Uh, we don't want the vacuum system just running while nobody's there, so if there's nobody in a parking place, it's not running. If there's one person or ten people, it's the same, um. Same turbine running, um, same decibel reading, uh, that there, we, we opt to get on every location, they sound their kit. Um, which has some huge mufflers on the exhaust of the turbines and, uh, we've had some great, um, happy neighbors. Having over how many locations now? Um, everybody's been very happy with this system, it's, it's expensive, but, you know, it gets the outcome of, uh, great suction for customers. But, you know, even when the customer is on the site, they can't even hear the vacuum system running. Uh, we actually have people ask us sometimes how to turn it on, you just, I'll just take the hose out, it works, it's already working.
Along with that question, if, if the request came up to move that to the front of Burris? If you go up to the end of the row to the right toward Route nine?
Yes.
Could that be located if it had to be?
Yes, sir.
Further away from, further away from the houses?
Absolutely, like you're saying, within the, that little, um.
Little peninsula that comes out there somewhere in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, I'll be honest with you, we could move it anywhere on that facility.
I mean, you know, push came to shove and the noise level was of a concern, even though it may not be, would that be feasible?
I don't think there's any, any residents on that.
I don't know.
In that area, so I think.
Okay.
Down at the bottom.
Yeah. Correct, correct, the, uh, the magenta line, um, on the bottom of the plan represents the residential, but approximate residential zoning district boundary. So the residences are to the south of the site. But yes, um, this is interior to the property and it can be relocated. Uh, we would, if that was to be the case, we'd probably just shift some of the vacuum stations to the left, you know, to, to accommodate that. Um, I would also like to add that, um, in addition to the landscaping on the South Gate Drive frontage, there's also a grade change in the site. Um, so the, the site in the corner there where the trash enclosure is located is actually six feet lower than the South Gate Drive and Oriole. Uh, Drive intersection, so not only is the building in the site located lower and the adjacent neighborhood is also. Uh, will be screened with the landscaping, but there's also going to be a fence on top of that wall, so. Um, you know, the visual barrier is going to be there and the sound is going to be further attenuated just by the fact of the grade change in the separation distance.
Okay, and the, and the wall on the back of the building, what's that, the east, east, west side, right?
Yes.
That's all non-residential, I don't really, I'm not that familiar with that back lot. That's all.
Uh, yes, the, the back lot, the back lot is, I believe, accessory parking for, uh, the adjacent, uh, restaurant use, which, uh. Yeah, the Red Lobster, uh, building.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is really in a trans, this is the property that's in the transition zone between the commercial corridor and the, the residential corridor to the south.
Okay, thanks.
What does sixty-nine decibels compare to? Do you have any, I don't know what that number means.
It's, uh, uh, I believe sixty-nine is the household vacuum level.
And is it? The other question, is it possible to move the garbage enclosure? In, more into the lot somewhere so that it's not close to the magenta line?
It is, and this is something that we've looked at internally. And it's possible to move it around to a location that's a little more interior to the site. Um, you have to balance that with access to it and getting, uh, refuse vehicle in and out to, to do those operations. But, uh, the benefit to it being a, a dumpster enclosure, a refuse location is that, and using private carding is that those are scheduled. So those can be scheduled during, um, off-peak hours when the facility is closed and that, you know, they can maneuver throughout the site as needed.
And then your hours of operation, please?
Eight to seven.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Mayor?
Can customers come on just to use the vacuum? So is the only way to use the vacuum is to get a car wash?
Only way to use the vacuum is to have to use the car wash.
Is it timed, or is it unlimited?
It's unlimited for the, for a car wash customer to use it.
And I'd like to add that there's no retail sales here of any vehicle detailing products, so there's no customers entering this building. It's all fully automated, there's no detailing by staff, there's no towel drying by staff. It's all, it's all fully automated and then self-serve after that.
So with its current location, what would the decibel level be at the nearest house?
Well, based on the manufacturer's specifications, it would be ten decibels or less.
Probably less than the ambient.
Or, excuse me, excuse me, thirty-eight decibels or less, thirty feet from the unit.
Well, the nearest house is in seventy feet, right?
The nearest residential property line, so the residential structure itself, is beyond that, seventy, seventy-one feet.
And that's your market property line, correct? James?
Correct. Tony S.
Uh, yeah, just one thing. You know, the current site has got that other exit on the corner of Route nine and South Gate Drive. Is that area in the center on the side of the tunnel there where people can bypass the car wash? Is that another exit onto South Gate, or is it only back to Route nine?
No, the site access is being consolidated to Route nine. The area you're referring to here, and I apologize for not pointing this out earlier, is designated for employee parking. And it's kind of nestled into this one-way-only bypass lane area because it's going to only be for employees. It's non-transient, you know, we don't also have a retail component here either. So it's for employees only. And you're correct in that we're proposing to close the driveway at South Gate Drive here, which is, you would never put a driveway that close to a busy intersection like this day and age. So we see that as a good improvement here, and we know the DOT is going to be supportive of that too, that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, do you know the status with planning?
Yeah, they'll be back in front of the planning board later this month, next Thursday. There are a number of site plan, you know, layout questions that are still to be resolved. You know, I mean, one of the, one of the challenges with the site, the circulation is fine probably for automobiles, but, you know, the fire department needs to circulate here as well. They can get around, but that turn back onto Route nine is one that is a little bit of a concern. Of course, it would only be during an emergency, but, you know, it's not an easy turn to make. Things like that are still being resolved. So it's, you know, the, before they can, before this board can make any decision, as was said at the very beginning, the planning board will at least need to make a secret determination, and then would send it back to you for the actual discussion on the variance. So the layout may change a little bit.
And also, the first public hearing is this July meeting?
That's true, the first public hearing is this July meeting. That's an important point as well, yeah.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this application? All right, there's no one in the audience. Anyone on Zoom?
James, could you unshare your screen for us, so we can see who's out there? Thank you. So anyone other than the applicants looking to comment on this?
All right, then, I don't see anyone, so I'll move to adjourn this to the August fourteenth meeting.
Planning's meeting before that. I mean, I don't know if it'll be ready for August or not, but we could always re-adjourn it if need be, so.
So I'll make that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Then that motion carries. Then I'm going to move that we take a little break and reconvene at eight o'clock. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Third.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that motion carries.